This meeting of the Gadsens City Council will now come to order and the Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Councilman Stewart is absent today. Councilman Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Antoine Hoyt, one of our youth in government students, to come forward and lead us the invocation for us. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everyone please bow your heads. Kind Father God, God we thank you for this day because it's the day that you have made and God we come to rejoice and be glad in it. God we thank you for how you love us and you bless us and God we thank you for this time, God. God we ask you to place a special blessing on the heads of our leaders, God as they, God, that they discuss whatever's going to be said, God, and God we ask you to give them the knowledge to know that everything that they do is on them, God, and God you require of them, God. And God we thank you for every great decision that they're going to make for us, God, and God we thank and we praise you and we give your name. All the glory, praise and honor because it is truly due to your name. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chair, will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Safety and Education and Recreation Committee meetings, work session, and city council meeting on April the 9th. So moved. Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve the minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of April the 5th through the 11th.
So moved.
Second. Including BOLF funds, refunds.
Clerk, will you take your vote? Discussion. I was really gonna make a motion to hold those checks, but since they passed them out already, I'm gonna yield to go ahead and okay them.
You can make a symbolic motion, man.
I can make a symbolic motion now. That's okay, go ahead.
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor.
I'd like to ask Ms. Sheila Jones, is she here? Yeah, there she is. Ms. Jones is the communications supervisor for our dispatch down in the police department and fire department, sort of a little bit of everything, right, Ms. Jones? Whereas in emergency situation, most Americans depend on 911 each day. More than a half a million public safety communicators answer desperate call for help, responding with services that save lives and property of citizens in need of assistance. These dedicated men and women are more than anonymous voices on the telephone line. They are local police, fire, and medical professionals who use public safety telecommunications to quickly respond to emergency calls. We rely on their knowledge and professionalism as they make critical decisions, obtain information, and quickly dispatch needed aid wherever needed. The City of Gadsens dispatchers serve our citizens daily in countless ways. The work of these unseen first responders is invaluable in emergency situations and each of these dedicated men and women deserves our heartfelt appreciation. Our citizens place their trust in these men and women not just this week, but every day, every hour of the year. This week is a time for grateful city, for a grateful city to show its appreciation and to recognize that our health, safety, and well-being are often dependent on the commitment and steadfast devotion of these individuals. Therefore, I Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsen, do hereby proclaim the week of April 14th through 20th as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Gadsen and urge our citizens to join me as we show our appreciation to these valuable public servants.
On behalf of all of the dispatches, this is just not for me and all. We have 15 dispatches to work down there day and night, 12-hour shifts. Sometimes they're working 16 hours, sometimes they're working longer. So, they will really appreciate this and we just like the idea that the city's actually seeing, a lot of times you're working in a dungeon and you don't really feel like a lot of people are seeing what's going on and recognizing the things that you do, but they do a great work down there. A lot of people don't get to see it all until they get ready to call in exactly who's behind the phone and stuff like that. I'm only one, I'm supervised, but we're working diligently and all, and we thank you all so much for the recognition. Thank you all so much.
If you've never been down there too, it's really nice and all, but it's sort of like you're in a cave. I mean, it's all machines and phones and computers and like, what, two weeks ago when we had the storms come through, if you think that's not a busy happening place, it's amazing all the things that they do and how they get the people to the right places they need to go. Thanks.
Okay, unfinished business? We have none to do. Nine is this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1222 Mayflower Street in District 2. Michael Todd Green being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Will you please come forward to the microphone, please? State your name and address for the city clerk, please.
The address of the place? Michael Green. And the address is 1222 Mayflower.
Okay, what is your address?
My address is where the house is.
Okay.
Yeah, 1222 Mayflower Street, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to put my part in to say that I've done all I can as far as money goes right now, but I intend to get the place up to par, so, you know, whatever you guys will give me, I'll take it.
Do he live in the house now?
No, sir, no.
Okay, that was the address you gave, I thought.
Yes, sir. That's not where I live.
I'm sorry.
That's not where I live.
Okay, that was the address you gave, I thought that's where you lived, I'm sorry.
Right there.
You need to give her the address where you live.
Where you reside.
He did, he actually gave me Mayflower, which is his residence, because the address of this property is on Tidmore Bend Road.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
It says, on this resolution, it's got Mayflower.
Right, that's the property that's concerned.
I'm sorry, I said that right.
You said that, okay. I just wanted to say.
I'll be okay.
We don't want to tear down a rural house.
This is true.
Neither please.
We'll go ahead and finish this and you will know what decision is. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to it? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in August of 2011. There was a building permit taken out in November of 2011. There has been some painting done to the residents. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Brian, would this qualify for possible rehab?
We would crunch the numbers after resolution today, but looking at the tax appraisal, it would qualify, yes.
Mr. Green understands that? Did you understand that? You've talked with him about that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
During our next public hearing, it's a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1405 Cansler Avenue in District 3. The state of Alabama, Barfield Investments, First Family Financial Services, Marquita K. Kenny, Jeff Walsh, and Bridget Smith, being the last known owners, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in March of 2011. There have been no improvements and there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Brian, I don't think, I don't, do you think?
We could crunch the numbers, but it's probably not gonna work.
Okay. And the reason I asked that is because it gives me an opportunity to get on my soapbox again, and I know everybody don't like that, but that's tough, that's why I'm up here. I feel like this is a great opportunity for Habitat for Humanity to come in and get properties for, instead of us tearing them down to rehab them. They can afford to do it if they would get into a rehab program. And I know our local Habitat don't do that, but I wish they would, so if you know of anybody who works with Habitat, kind of encourage them to start doing rehab as opposed to just new housing. It's a lot less expensive and it would save the city a lot of money, number one, and number two, it would keep our neighborhoods with affordable housing within those communities and they won't look like ghost towns. So I'm gonna get off my soapbox.
Is that not a federal situation, Habitat?
No.
You don't have to start at the federal level coming down?
No. The local governing body can do what they want to do, because there are chapters throughout this state that do do housing rehab.
Man, I didn't know.
Yeah.
I went to the Habitat State Awards banquet a couple of weeks ago, and the guy who was the keynote speaker from Texas, and he was very nice, got to talking to him, and he told about projects he had done in Africa. He had partnered up with, I forgot, I want to say it's Home Depot, and they built restrooms at a place where a village that had no restrooms. And they saved up about $600, they wanted them to have some investment in it, and they really learned what it works like, how it works. And then they were going back, I think, when they saved another 600 to do some showers. And he's done build-outs in Atlanta and other places. He's retired, but he's pretty high up the hierarchy in the national Habitat thing. And I got to talking to him later that night, got to be pretty good friends with him. We had a lot of, he's a Texas Tech guy, and he was wanting them to play Alabama in the championship game. But anyway, what it boiled down to, he told me later, he gave me his card, that he would be going to Atlanta at a big meeting he was gonna speak at and all in June. And I was telling him where we were located and all that, so he says he's gonna stop by and see me, and I said, "You think you could get us a project of 25 or 30, 40 homes and build, you know, get people to come in?" And he said, "Oh, no, but I'm gonna come by and see you and look at your town." So we'll see what happens on that. I'm not promising anything, so that's not a headline.
Again, I mean, I'm not, it's not jump on Habitat today, but I know the City of Aniston right down the street had a blitz and they did 100 houses. You know, not only did they build, but they also did rehabbing and that. And hopefully our chapter will expand their horizon.
He's done several of those, I'm hopeful he might take a look and say, "We may bring some people in and see if we can do a blitz like that," so that's what I'm hoping.
I mean, you know, I really would like to see this chapter, and, you know, we talk about headlines, I'd love to see, you know, the Times run a story, but it'd be nice to see this chapter develop an appetite for rehab, rehab homes, as opposed to all new construction. But, you know, that's just something that's open for discussion. But again, I know that there are some projects in the state, most notably in Mobile County, I believe, where they've done some significant rehab projects and Habitat, through their volunteer labor and the land donations and land swaps and what have you, have been able to put together some meaningful projects.
I think in addition to that, last meeting we had with Habitat here, at one of our pre-council meetings, or at a committed meeting, we asked them to look into other avenues of housing rather than just new construction, and I think Steve Schaffenberg was receptive, they were receptive to looking at ideas other than what we have now. We just, I think we, it's incumbent upon us to follow up with him to see if he has had any more thoughts about any other projects attacking this in a different manner. So I think we'll give Steve an opportunity to come back to us again and see if he has thought about it anymore.
Anything we can do to keep them having to tear down all these houses every year we need to do.
What happens three or four years ago when the stimulus came out, Huntsville, Birmingham, Montgomery, and Mobile got all the money. And then the next phase was supposed to go to smaller areas, and we thought we were gonna get some through Outer Hole then, and they came back and gave the next phase of stimulus money to the same four cities, and I believe they added Fairfield, if I'm not mistaken. So we never did get any, but we had applied for about 450,000, but it didn't work out.
Just keep trying.
We will.
Number 11 is a resolution authorizing agreement.
We need to vote.
We need to vote.
We need to vote.
I'm sorry.
We have a motion in second to adopt the resolution. Those in favor to adopt, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt item number 10.
Okay, resolution authorizing agreement with L and L Marine. This is for the city to sponsor a couples fishing tournament at Coastal Landing on June 8th, and the amount is $2,000. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Resolution designating portion of Black Creek Parkway as a Titan Parkway. In honor of the Gadsen City High School, the City Council wishes to designate a portion of Black Creek Parkway from the west exit ramp of I-759 through South 11th Street as Titans, Titan Parkway. The City Council unanimously supports the designation and considers it a great privilege and honor to install Titan Parkway signs on Black Creek Parkway in the City of Gadsen. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I think we have a copy of the sign.
I think the mayor's gonna have.
Oh, the mayor's gonna do that? You got something to do, something?
Proclamation.
He's got proclamation.
After y'all pass it, yeah.
Oh, okay, well just hold on to it then, he's gonna do a proclamation, okay. I didn't realize he was gonna do that.
There's no discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
If the president of the class hadn't turned the water, maybe he would come up and stand by.
Yeah, I was gonna ask Dalton Hopper to come up and.
The Vice President. Yeah, we need a sign holder.
Whereas the Gadsen City High School class of 2013 has decided to sponsor a gift to the Gadsen City High School as acknowledgement for four years, excellent years of education and preparation for the future success. Whereas part of this gift proposal involves an honorary designation of a portion of the current Black Creek Parkway to Titan Parkway. The Gadsen City Council has adopted a resolution approving the said honorary designation of Titan Parkway. The senior class has expressed its desire to paint lightning bolts on a portion of the parkway leading to the entrance of Gadsen City High School. Whereas the class has made a commitment to purchase all the needed supplies to ensure this project is completed, including but not limited to paint, stencils, equipment, and new street signs. Therefore, I Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsen, do hereby express my support on behalf of the City of Gadsen for this worthy endeavor, commend the class for its vision and generosity, and do hereby proclaim April 16th, 2013, as Gadsen City High School Class of 2013 Day in the City of Gadsen.
Babe, television wants you to hold that sign up where he can get it.
Thank you.
Back in the bag?
There we go.
There we go.
I'll be quick. We discussed last week, and I have spoken with our state delegation. Representative Craig Ford supports it. We actually have a meeting with Mr. Nick Hall, a representative of the Department of Transportation, this Friday at the school to discuss interstate signs. So that's coming along nicely. And we also spoke with Representative Butler and Norgren, and they support it. They're kind of taking a backseat because they don't really know how it works, she said. She didn't know how to go about getting signs, so we're letting Representative Ford handle that for us. Senator Williams hadn't been able, we haven't been able to get in touch with him for comment, so hopefully soon we'll see some support from him. I would like to take a minute just to thank everybody. The city's really done their part. Appreciate Mr. Nick Hall, city planner, he's really kind of headed this up for us. Obviously, City Council and the mayor for their support, couldn't have done it without y'all. Also, the school, teachers, all of our staff, administration. Dr. Ed Miller has done a great job in support, as well as Mr. Blackwell. The idea actually came last year's class, and he kind of gave it to me. Last semester is just kind of a see what you can do, and I actually asked him, once we kind of got somewhere, if he ever thought we'd get this far, and his answer was no. So, told you so. But I'm really proud and I'm honored to represent my class. You know, obviously we have a lot of members here, a lot of student leaders, and I heard this quote a couple of years ago, "Effective leadership is not making speeches or being liked. Leadership is defined by results, not attributes." And today, we got results. What we've talked about for the past months has come forth, and I'm really proud of that. We're the seventh graduating class of Gadsen City High School, and we're not Gadsen High, we're not Litchfield, and we're not even a Sanson. We're Gadsen City, and we are the Titans.
New businesses, are there any new businesses?
Yes, Mr. President, I guess not, but only one.
The end is the only two.
Really, I always said start at that end, come this way, but I guess we're all the way down to the end.
But you're the only one that had new business.
I'm, yeah, okay. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider ordinance amending section 106-2 of the Code of Ordinances. This is in there of noise. I'm just gonna do them one at a time and let them understand what they are.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay. Considered, I move to adopt, I'm sorry.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is an ordinance dealing mainly with minimum fines concerning the noise ordinance. The first offense is $250. This is in a 12-month period of time. The second offense is $300. The third offense is $350, and considering this is in a 12-month period of time, under section 1-7 of the state code, the judge does have the authority to go to $500. That's where we stand.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And the second one is, talking about litter, ask for unanimous consent to consider. I've had this luck with, like you got, Bob, for about three weeks. How do you get rid of it?
You don't.
I don't think I can read properly. Looking at it, I appreciate it.
It would be a help if the polymer.
Yeah, I think you're right about that too. Anyway, hopefully I ask for unanimous consent to consider this ordinance.
Second.
Second.
It's this one, okay.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay, I move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is amending sections 46-94B and 82-33.1 of the Code of Ordinances. This is, again, concerning the litter ordinance. These also are minimum fines that the court can come forth. On the first offense is $250, that is a minimum, with eight hours of community service. The second offense, within that 12-month period of time, is $350 with a minimum of 16 hours of community service. And the third time you go out and do it, it's gonna be, in that 12-month period of time, is gonna be $450 with a minimum of three days in jail. Keep that in mind, if that doesn't hit you, nothing else will. Sometimes money doesn't matter, but when you consider that you could go to jail and you could be out there in the heat of the summer picking up litter, that'll hit you right between eyes. So keep it in your car or keep it in the house so you can put it in the garbage can.
Yeah, be sure, we do have a lot of pickup trucks, and people have a tendency to throw their trash and so forth in there, with the idea that they're going to take it somewhere and dump it legally. But if it blows out, you stand a chance of being fined, just like he said. So be careful with your pickup trucks, been throwing stuff in the back.
Yeah, Mr. President, let me say one other thing that's gonna come up. We will be talking about enforcement, and we'll be talking about it in a very strong way, but there are some things within the enforcement that we need to get with the police department and talk about and come to an understanding about, and that'll happen in the next week, two weeks or so.
Could I make a quick comment, Mr. President? Our judge is really tough on litter. He's tough on a lot of things, but he's tough on litter. We had a guy a couple of months ago who dumped a truckload on a dead-end circle, and through reported tag number, and our environmental officer did a little investigation, found out who it was. We brought him into court, fined him, I think, 500 bucks plus court cost, and told him, we wanted him out there the next morning cleaning that up to take it to the dump, and he said he was not gonna pick it up. So he went to jail for three days. He came back and the judge asked him, was he gonna clean it up the next morning? He said, "No, he was not." So he went back to jail for three more days. The third time he came back, the judge asked him, would he pick it up? He said, "Yes, sir, Judge, I'll be out there in the morning." And so we had an environmental officer who stood up there and watched him with him back and forth, he got everything up and took it to the dump.
That's what you call enforcement.
That's enforcement, from the judge's standpoint. But also, this doesn't only mean, you know, you dumping litter, you know, at the end of a right-of-way, on the right-of-way, your trash, you know, in an area where you think nobody will see you do it. This also means you're riding down the street and you just finished your double soda from McDonald's, you know, you throwing a cup out the window. That's littering. And that service, when you say community service, community service, eight and 16 hours of community service, that's not out there, that's not visiting the school or church or something, that's going out there on the street picking up litter for eight hours for your first offense, 16 hours. So if you do that, you stand a chance of your friends riding by seeing you, you know, out there picking up litter on the street. So it's just advisable not to do it.
Any other new business?
We need to vote on this one.
One last moment on this.
All right. Those in favor of adopting the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business? Department reports, committees, are there any?
Amanda.
Amanda from the library.
I apologize, I should've.
I apologize, I should've gotten on the list this morning, but I would be remiss as a director if I did not mention that this is National Library Week. It is a week that the American Library Association designates to support and praise our public libraries. And I need to express my appreciation to the Gadsden Public Library, the staff of the library, and the mayor and city council. I know that sometimes we take for granted that we have a good mayor and city council, but so many libraries suffer because their, their leaders don't support their libraries. So when it comes time to make budget cuts, that's where those come from. But I can honestly say that this mayor and city council don't cut our budgets, they support our libraries. They come to the library, they tell people about the library. And last year alone, we had 63,000 visits to the library. So I would say we're a pretty happening place to be. And we're excited about 2013 and all the great things that we have planned. So thank you, thanks to the staff, and thanks to the community that uses our library.
Thank you, Amanda.
Anyone else? Remarks by the mayor and the council? Mayor, you wanna start?
Quickly, I would say that I've talked to a lot of these students. Some of them, I know them, some of them I know their parents. Sadly, I know a lot of them's grandparents, too. But anyway, I wanna say, I think this group right here, you're gonna hear a lot about a lot of these folks down the road. We're proud of them and they're good representatives of our city. And we're glad to have you here today and we're looking forward to hear good things from all of you. Thanks.
Billy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to welcome all the kids, all of the, all of the high school students that we have represented here today from Gadsden City High School. It's a pleasure to have you here with us today. We hope that you've enjoyed it. Hope that there've been some moments, you know, that you have laughed and then there were some moments, you know, where you saw some serious activities taking place. And I, I, again, welcome you to the city council meeting today, Youth and Government Day. And we'll look forward to having lunch. And I also would like to do this, and I know this is rather unorthodox, but do I see a set of twins out in there?
Yeah.
Do I see a set of twins? All right, would y'all stand up, please? Cause I just, this is, you don't see twins too often, but I just like the twins to stand up.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you all for being here. And that's all I have.
Aren't you surprised? Very.
Thank you, Mr. President. On a, on a more somber note, I do wanna just take the, take a quick opportunity to just remember those people who are managing through a very difficult situation in the city of Boston, Massachusetts. So we, again, are faced with a terror incident on our soil. And, and so please keep those folks in your thoughts and prayers. I wanna thank Lisa for the update on our finances. And, and, you know, I, I think it goes without saying, we're very proud of the posture that we've taken, the posturing that we've taken and the position that we've taken as it relates to our financial matters. But we do have one opportunity, and she, she hit on it. We really have to be creative in terms of revenue sources. So, and I think the mayor's office and this council is looking at those things and, and we will, at, at some level, address that need. But, but again, overall, I'm, I'm excited about where we are as a city and, and some of the things that we are moving towards. And, and let me take this opportunity to embarrass my best friend's son, Derek Charles Austin. So I wanna recognize him and, and, and welcome him to the council meeting today. And, and I see his mother trying to hide over there as well. So I wanna recognize her as well. And, and I, and again, you know, it's probably gonna be said another five or six times, but I think it's just awesome what these young people have done as it relates to the Titan Parkway project. And shame on, shame on Keith Blackwell for not having any more confidence in him than what he did. I, I, I know him well and I think, I think he challenged him more than doubting him. I think he, he more, he challenged him to do it and they, they came through. Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. And, and so again, you know, we wanna, we wanna let you guys know that we're, we're immensely proud of you and very proud of what you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, again, I know everyone is gonna talk about our young people and I've had an opportunity to talk to several of them this morning and talk about the importance of things that are happening around you. I want to remind people that today, they're reading the letter from the Birmingham jail all around the country. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., some 50 years ago, wrote that letter from the Birmingham jail during the civil rights movement here in Alabama. Also, this month is the anniversary, the 50th anniversary of the shooting and the killing of William Moore. A lot of our young people in this community and a lot of our older people are not aware of that. So I want you to keep that in mind, too, some 50 years ago. So there are a number of things that are going on in this community and I try to express to our young people the importance about history and being aware of your surroundings and the things that are happening. The Boston Marathon, Boston Marathon is another opportunity, another situation where 50 years from now, they'll be talking about that, that issue. So please, ma'am, and please, sir, get involved in your community. Make your history be a positive experience as opposed to a negative experience. And I, I think these young people are gonna be doing that. Just in talking to them, I was very, very encouraged. Some of the questions they asked and some of the things that they're, they're talking about doing. So I'm excited about our future. You know, people always talk about our young people and the only thing you hear about them is something negative and something bad. They don't talk about our, our good young people who are out there doing positive things. You know, you've got one or two guys who go out there and mess up and then they label all of you young people the same way. But I'm here to tell you that a vast majority of our young people, I would say 95, 96% of our young people are great and they're doing great things. And I'm just proud of you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do wanna echo what Robert said. I've been sitting here watching y'all the whole meeting and trying to see if I seen anybody talking. I was very attentive. Y'all was well-listened to everything we had to say up here. And I think this is probably the, the quietest class we've had, Ms. Katie. I mean, they were respectful to us all and, I mean, I'm just glad y'all here. And I'm very, very proud of everyone that's here today. I just wanna turn our thoughts to the people in Boston. We do wanna say a prayer, send a prayer to them up there in Boston. People that's lost lives since one that got injured. Also, I do wanna talk about Saturday, it's Music On Me Again, starts at 6 o'clock. This is the first meeting, music real high for the year. We'll go all the way through August, it starts at 6 o'clock to 10, come out and hear live music free. And also, there'll be plenty of it, so y'all just come out, it lasts from 6, starts at 6 and lasts till 10. That's all I got.
Hmm, okay. Well, everybody was here this morning, so really don't forget now, litter and noise. Keep that in mind. I think we pressured that, didn't we, Billy?
Yes, we have.
And Robert, I believe we pushed that to the limit so they'll understand it.
We just didn't push the fines to the limit.
And everybody, yeah, well, that's true.
To what we allowed legally, we did.
Told we couldn't, told we couldn't. And to this class out there, the reason this came about on the Titan Parkway is, is because you worked for it and you didn't quit. And I got in on one half of what Leroy Falcon was talking to y'all about this morning. And I know you listened because you were quiet and you were attentive. And what he was trying to get over to you was, stop, look, listen, read, understand, comprehend, and bring yourself to the point like you want to be. He says you can be a council member, you can be the mayor of this city. And he put that over two or three times. Do you disagree with me on that? You did? Okay. Well, I really mean it. I really do. I think it's, Leroy did a good job. He really did, and I appreciate him being here on that. Other part is, thank y'all, mayor, city council, and Miss Patrice Goff. I really appreciate that. It's gonna go over really big. We've got a lot of things going over there and it's gonna go for a good purpose.
Do any of y'all have a question? Or did Robert tell you everything you needed to know?
I missed what Robert said. All I heard was what Leroy said. Did Robert do that? Did he come across okay? Everybody thought Robert did okay, raise your hand. I'm sorry. Hey, you did okay, Robert.
Recognize the sponsor.
Oh, yeah.
You did good.
I did real good. No, we, we, we would like to recognize Ms. Katie, the, the sponsor.
Absolutely.
Ms. Katie? No, you gotta stand up. You just can't hold your hand up. Let's give her a hand.
Would you like to say something?
Yes.
Well, just to thank you guys for allowing us to come and thank the YMCA for sponsoring these kids. And this will be something these kids will cherish for the rest of their lives. Thank you all.
And that was the next one. Is Leroy here from the Y, the sponsor? He's already down there. We, we getting ready to go eat, guys. So maybe we'll just shut up so Mr. Echols can dismiss us.
Well, we're proud of all of you. So let's go eat. It's made easy, Jerry.